We'll move forward with Dr. Davies telling us about professional educational.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. The National Department of Education is the coordinator of the curriculum and professional development department. And just as some background, I think last year when we talked about the comprehensive plan, we thought of, I think our third goal was to investigate various other means to measure our success beyond the high-stakes testing. And I guess this is my attempt at trying to identify some numbers within regard to professional learning that we can start looking at. And because it's such an integral part of programming here in Exeter, we should certainly continue to try to increase that to the extent possible. So with that, the curriculum department and professional development department is all here today. And, well, not all of everybody, but Julie Klein is our supervisor of reading and Heidi Rockland is our newly added staff member who is the supervisor of, well, math coordinator, math and STEM coordinator. Who is missing is Karen Denunzio, who's our literacy coach in grades K-12. And certainly can't have a department without Mary Ann Ginni, who is just a backbone and provides a lot of information and support for teachers and myself with regard to this.
Our tech department does training all the time.
Oh, and the tech department?
Not officially.
That goes into, so beyond the actual folks that I consider in the department, we do have the technology department and we, as well as the professional development committee. Wow, that is...
Someone call the fire department.
I thought they were playing Twister.
Obviously, Dr. Davis doesn't have electric at his home. Why, Dan? Silly man. Just not electrified.
There you go. There it comes.
Get him, David.
I apologize.
Wait, all right. Wouldn't that charge, I guess? Karen, you got it? What was I saying? Okay, so introduced our department. I also want to do a shout-out to the tech department. Dr. Martin is correct in saying that we get a lot of support from just about every department when it comes to professional learning. And as well as committee members, teachers have a huge part of this as well. We have a professional development committee that has about 34 members in it, representing each of our buildings, and they provide a great deal of information as to where we should go with regarding, with regard to professional development activities. We also have an Act 48 committee that meets once a year to discuss the importance and the changes to the Act 48 laws. So again, as I mentioned before, we are trying to just get this boiled down to some numbers that we can look at and perhaps measure our growth from year to year. And this is a work in progress, and I'm going to ask for your patience with regard to defining some of these different variables that we can start measuring. But I thought that it would be appropriate to begin with the professional learning that happens over the summer. Back in February, Mrs. Klein, our reading supervisor, put together a survey with the help of Dan Wilczek and some other folks to identify some needs throughout the district with regard to professional learning. And we have, we had a great response. And it really led to the development of this year's professional learning because one of the things that we identified is that teachers are very much interested in engagement strategies. How to motivate unmotivated learners seems to be probably one of the most sought-after activities or professional learning experiences that our teachers are looking for. So we wanted to make sure that we provided opportunities for teachers to enroll in those throughout the summer. So in doing that, we've increased our number of activities this summer by 25. We have ADHD this year, and last year we offered 63 professional learning opportunities. So moving forward and through this, the, in addition to the summer activities, we have activities that are offered throughout the school year. And as I mentioned earlier, this is a work in progress. One of the things I'm going to be doing between now and the next school year is to clearly define what each of these categories are so that we can clearly measure our growth from year to year. Like, for example, what constitutes a professional learning activity in Exeter, et cetera. And we have a program called My Learning Plan that you can set up to do this for you. It's just a matter of us making sure that we check the right boxes and set the program out so that it will measure what we're looking for. Okay. So among the 64 activities that were offered throughout the school year, and actually, that's a round number. I think depending on how you define an activity, it could be certainly a lot more than that. We did a lot of training this year with mathematics. Each of our elementary teachers, I think, was in front of a math consultant or a math expert in mathematics at least seven or eight times throughout the school year, once monthly after the school year began up until February, and three times before school even started. So that was, that was impressive in terms of the amount of training they were offered there. And our secondary math teachers, probably even more so, because those teachers, CPM is a great program that values professional learning as well. And free of charge and part of the grant that they have through the Eisenhower Foundation, they were able to provide free professional learning for our secondary math teachers that actually exceeded the amount of professional development our elementary teachers got. So that was just great. Beyond that, we have Google Training that goes into our one-to-one and scheduling. As you know, our junior high school teachers and administration have been looking at some schedule opportunities largely to address the need for additional math time in that grade, in that building, in that grade span, but also to address some other learning needs as well. And so this coming school year, this past school year, we've been looking at those, at different scheduling models, and going forward, we'll be looking at how to employ instruction within that new configuration of scheduling. Further down, TERC is here, the Technical Education Resource Center. They came in and they supported our administration and teachers with regard to mathematics, how we can assess it, how we can evaluate it, how we can monitor the implementation of our math programs. Because I think it's a, an understatement to say that the math has changed considerably this year for the better, but it's changed for everybody. It's changed for our parents, it's changed for our teachers, and it certainly has also changed for our administration. And at every level, we needed to provide support for those folks that are learning something new, and that is how TERC was brought into the, into the school district. Beyond that, Julie Klein's been working with college writing. That's happening in our secondary grade levels. And this year, we're looking at how to, I think that the 10% summary is our main focus up at the high school and the junior high going forward, how we can summarize text in a very systematic and consistent way, whether it's in social studies or science, any content area, any, any area, so that students have a skill that they can go back to and just know how to put together a decent summary. We've also had a lot of training with regard to curriculum writing with our department chairs. I think the next number that I put down there is probably grossly underestimated because, again, we didn't really define professional learning hours. After, Mary Ann and I were looking at it this afternoon, we started counting up all the professional learning hours, and I think this is one area that I would like to continue to report going forward with certainty. But the number is more accurately presented as 14,000 hours, not 4,000 professional development hours. And that's a large number largely because of the three, well, we had four Act 80 days at the end of the school year last year, which was close to 100 hours, I'm sorry, 25 hours of professional learning just within that. So I think the averaged out by the number of teachers, the teachers received close to 50 hours on average of professional learning throughout the school year this year, which is considerable. A big thing that we've been talking about in our curriculum meetings have been the new programming. We have new math programs, and we have the new STEM programming. And I thought the number of new teachers that are teaching new programs or a new curriculum is important. And I say that because whenever you're teaching a new, a new curriculum or using a new text or something, it's a, it's a huge learning curve that requires a tremendous amount of time and opportunities for teachers to really get into the new curriculums that they can understand and so they can better teach their students that curriculum. So I thought that 187 students, I mean, I'm sorry, teachers teaching a new curriculum, over half of our teacher, teaching staff are involved in some form of new curriculum. I thought that was impressive as well. Beyond that, we have conferences that were attended by teachers and administrators. I think that for those who regularly attend the curriculum meetings, I talk often about how, if we're going to lead something with regard to whether it's math or STEM or anything, we as administrators have to be in front of that learning curve to the extent possible. Certainly, we won't be the content experts as perhaps our secondary math teachers or science teachers, but we certainly need to know what's expected of our teachers, and we have to understand what we're asking them to do. So professional learning for our administrative staff is extremely important, and it's part of their goals, that they have to define how they are going to begin their own professional learning throughout the school year. And again, in that area, I just listed a few. We sent, I guess, Mr. Kane and Mrs. Rockland went to the Project Lead the Way kickoff conference earlier in the fall. Additionally, she went to the NCSM conference. Some folks went to the CPM conference. Myself and Julie and Karen Denunzio attended the college writing, and I was in Harrisburg. There's just a few other ones there that we've gone to as administrators or have sent teachers to. Right now, we are proud to announce that everybody in our junior high school has been trained in reading apprenticeship, largely due to the efforts of Julie and Karen Denunzio who have been leading that, that push. So that's, that's awesome. And we also have teachers who are attending, grant-funded, PA Raze grants for the seed grant, which is the junior high, as well as just the Raze grant, which is the senior high. So we have that continuing, and that's going to be ongoing. Our goal is to have everybody trained in reading apprenticeship because reading apprenticeship allows teachers to teach reading in any area, any content area. The same types of strategies can be employed in reading social studies, science, mathematics, language arts, fiction, nonfiction, et cetera. So, oh, the next item would be parent workshops. I know for a fact that the more I think about these numbers, it's got to be more than that just because of the amount of time and effort that our administrators have been putting into bringing the community in. As I mentioned earlier, when we have a new program, when we have a new initiative or anything that's new, this one-to-one computer program initiative, for example, at the high school, it's new to everybody. It's new to the teachers, it's new to the students, and it's new to the parents. And everybody wants to know how they can best support those types of initiatives, or at least to learn more about it. So we've been putting together parent nights that have been very informational and supportive for our parents that range from math information nights. We had that very popular Bring It to STEM night, I think that was last month, as well as all these other different nights. Some of these are required by law. Title I, for example, requires us to have a family information night. But others are things that we're just trying to do to promote the programs that we have here in Exeter. So going forward, I did list some of the new courses here. You have an AP Stats course and an economics, AP Economics course that'll be in the senior high school, as well as an AP Art class. It's, Mrs. Pinkert, and I've been teaching that class. We have Writing in the 21st Century. Court Connections III is a course that we are currently using in the junior high school. We are bringing that into the senior high school, and that's how it made it to this particular listing. We also have a new STEM course and Introduction to Band. And the Introduction to Band, I thought, is really neat because when we went to the orchestra concert, I think it was over the winter, they had that introductory orchestra, was that with the strings, the first-year strings teachers and the high, students in the high school, and they're going to offer the same thing for band students. So those who missed the call back in third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh grade, they can still pick up an instrument and learn how to play it in the high school. So that's a, I think that's outstanding. We're all working on curriculum work. Next year, we have a new template for curriculum. I think that the only thing that's possibly different going forward with regard to curriculum writing is that we don't really have a defined date as to, you know, it's got to be written by blank date. And the reason that we've kind of held off on that hard and fast dated because as long as I've been writing curriculum or been a part of a curriculum writing initiative, it's changed. And oftentimes, just when you're finished, either the standards have changed or we have new technologies and new information, you have to go back and revisit it anyway. So we're just going to make this part of our culture, and that is to continually look at and evaluate the curriculum based on the current needs of our students. So that's, that's new and exciting in our curriculum department. There's other things that have really no curriculum focus, but certainly require a lot of professional development, and that would be on the last page. Our junior high school planning, the new schedule, a lot of teachers will be teaching in a, in a time that they weren't, they're not accustomed to, perhaps we're teaching in a block now or they weren't before, or they're teaching a new course altogether. All teachers in the junior high school will be incorporating technology into their curriculum so that they, the students can use the technology as part of the learning process and therefore helping to prepare them for the high school one-to-one initiative in a better, more efficient way. We're also looking at the senior high school and the Reifton School schedule, trying to be very specific with how we can support some of the remediation and the project-based learning initiatives that are happening at the, at the high school as a result of some of the mandates that are coming from the state. And at Reifton, we're trying to find ways to get some extension activity, time or enrichment time for our students, as well as some specific and explicit types of instruction with regard to technology. Because again, we have, this is a big investment for Exeter, and we want to make sure that the students are prepared when they get to a point where they are given a laptop or a Chromebook or something, that they know how to use it, and they can maximize that device for their, for their education. So we're going to, we're employing technology at all levels. We have a character education and bullying prevention program specifically at Reifton. They're going through a new process with that. It's very exciting, and that would be the trainers and consultants and people putting together a plan and another survey, of course, for regard to bullying. And the good thing about this was perhaps one of the things that may be a little bit different than perhaps an Olvea's program is that we're going to tie into what Reifton's already doing. They already have a character counts program. It's spelled C-O-W-N-P-S. And they are going to try to take the back off of that. So this isn't something that's going to be new, but it's just going to be something that's very explicit so that all students have a consistent training with regard to some of the lessons that are going to be developed for that. STEM, we have, it's going to be a very busy year for STEM, and next couple of years are going to be very busy. It seems that next school year, we'll be looking for some teachers to go out and get some training with, for a third course. We have Introduction to Engineering Design, we have Principles of Engineering, and now after talking with some of the technology teachers, the interest seems to be in architecture and engineering for a couple of different reasons. One is because we have some overlap with the class that we currently teach here in Exeter. So rather than teaching two very similar classes, we're going to put them together so that we have one honors-level architecture class or civil engineering class. And I think that's very exciting, that teachers at the, in the high school tech department are very motivated, very supportive of this, and they've just done a great job so far. And I'm really looking forward to seeing that program grow and grow. Heidi's been in the midst of designing a computer science strand. I think that we're going to agree that computers are the future, right? And we have to...
Not my future.
And we have to do everything we can to make sure that our students are prepared to be competitive in a marketplace that is going to be either using computers or working on computers, or something is going to be in some way related to computers. So we are earnestly looking at a strand that's going to put a very rigorous computer science component into place that's going to run parallel to our STEM program so that students can possibly go back and forth between the two strands because of the rigor that's going to be offered there. Again, we have some scheduling things that are happening with regard to Keystone remediation and the project-based assessments that we're all still trying to understand fully and wrap our heads around how to best employ that type of remediation and some of the things that the state is asking us to do. Because if you've been reading some of the articles from other districts, I think Bethlehem School District recently came out with something that it's almost, they don't know how they're going to be able to employ something like this in that school district. And certainly, it is larger than Exeter, but the, it's going to be just as difficult in commerce to try to employ a project-based assessment component here in Exeter. So we're working hard on trying to figure out how that's going to look. Last few pieces are, we're always having to learn more about P-VAS and principal and teacher evaluation. I think every year, there's different areas that are added on to the various evaluation pieces, and all of that requires training. It's been, teachers or principals are being required, being asked to be evaluated in a different way. Training goes into that so that they understand what it means to them. And I think most importantly, and Babb and I trying to, or all of the administration trying to figure out how to, you know, meet the letter of the law while also delivering an effective evaluation so that it's not just looking at a building level score, not just looking at P-VAS roster, determine the qualifications or the rating of a teacher or a principal for that matter. And then, I guess it was about two or three months ago, we had a special education audit, which we did very well on, but the findings were that we weren't providing enough professional learning for our staff with regard to special ed topics. So with that, we have several days where we are going to be providing considerably more special education types of topics for our teachers that will be required for them to take. It won't be something that would be voluntary, but they would need to take this so that they can understand special education laws and the various disabilities that our students have and come into their classroom, and how to support them at a higher level. I've often felt that one of the greatest things about my job is that I get to see, you know, from a, from a district standpoint, all the great things that are happening. And I, I'm very proud of our department, Heidi and Julie and Karen, we've done, done a lot with these teachers. And I think I'm even more proud of them because the more we talk to them about how it's going, I'd expect a lot of, you know, anxiety, but largely it's been very supportive. And, and it means a lot to me that they're supportive of this because it means that we're all on the same page. And I think that's a great thing. So I, I'll leave it with that, that the, that's my report. And I think we're doing a great job right now, and I think that it's just going to keep growing year to year. Any questions?
I have a question. I just, the numbers, I mean, the Act 48 numbers are really impressive, but my question is about the next step to that. And I just want you to comment about the mechanism that we have in place to make sure that everything is reported and is reported accurately. Because I know that when you look at those kinds of numbers, I think that can be overwhelming if we don't have enough staff for it. And I was just looking for your insight into that, what we have in place and whether you think it's adequate.
In terms of collecting the data and to report the numbers?
Right.
Is it adequate?
And then doing the actual...
For Act 48, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's, Mary Ann, that commands a lot of her time, reporting Act 48 hours. But it's also about putting procedures in place that people are used to looking at a sign-in sheet, knowing that you have to sign in for these various things and sign in twice. If anybody was, if you read the front of that catalog, I explained that you have to sign in twice, you know, it's very hard to, we go through this all the time, where somebody forgot to sign in, you go back, and so-and-so here, and it's just very time-consuming and trying to get all that stuff together. But do I think we're adequate with that? Yeah. I think that the more we look at how we can use My Learning Plan and the technologies that are available to us to help track that, I think the better it is. And I think that I'm very satisfied with the program. I just have to learn how to use it better because it does give us really good data. And I think that professional, data around professional learning is very important for a school district. So if I can capture some really key points that we can use to measure our growth here as a district, I think that would be outstanding, that we can all get behind and say that, you know, this department or this school district is excelling or needs to work on something specifically based on this number.
He signs a sign-in. Are teachers required to evaluate each session?
They are.
Okay. And because I think you need another piece behind this.
Yeah.
Talk about, did anyone put a sign in?
They actually fill out an online survey in My Learning Plan, but at almost every session, I know Julie and Heidi are surveying the teachers. It's an exit slip. We ask our teachers to do, we try to model what we're asking our teachers to do in a classroom. So we're asking them for an exit slip or an exit out the door, take it out the door, whatever they may call it. We're asking for something as well, some feedback on how we can improve what we did, you know, how we can take whatever we presented here on this particular day and then take it to the next level for those who didn't pick it up or may need a little bit extra. So, yeah.
As these new courses are added to the curriculum, what courses are being removed?
I don't know. With the...
Sometimes it's a matter of sections being reduced.
Fewer sections.
Yeah, fewer sections.
Because I know our enrollment total population is not increasing, so we...
Right.
We're shifting students, right?
Right, exactly. So some, a course may be under-enrolled and, you know, then a bunch of course will pick up those kids and maybe a teacher will pick up a different course. I'm thinking of music.
Music would be a good example of that, but for some of the AP courses, we had accelerated courses already, AP courses, I'm sorry, not AP, but accelerated or honors-level courses that they were just combining into that because it's like a singleton. So why not present an AP course instead of this accelerated version of stats or something like that?
The other thing we're doing, and I know Betty can attest to this, is as we're hiring new teachers, as we're replacing positions that are vacated, we're looking for Julie or more certified people. So for example, now we have, we have people teaching, you know, both social studies and English. So when you have that sort of teaching capacity, you can add a section of this or that, like an AP section, which is usually only one section, sometimes two. And you'll have a certified person who maybe is just under-enrolled in, you know, in a social studies course and has a free period that they can teach an English course or something to pick up another, like the writing course that he talked about. So we've really tried to do that, to really try to maximize the teaching capacity.
Okay, thanks. Do we have, do we have guidelines in place about how many preparations that one teacher can have? Or are you...
Well, in the contract, they must have at least X number of prep minutes.
No, I'm not talking about that kind of, I'm talking about how many courses...
Oh, okay, okay. How many preps? There's nothing in writing or anything, but, you know, obviously, we wouldn't give them a, you know, a different prep period.
Okay. I had one year with four, and I'll tell you what, it really impacted my effectiveness, and I would hope that...
I do not think everyone has four. I'm not even sure anybody has three, but there's nobody from the high school that can attest to that right now.
Okay. I just, yeah, I just think it's something we need to be cognizant of, even if there isn't a...
Oh, absolutely. Oh, well, we may, and if we forgot for a minute, we would get a reminder, so not to worry. We wouldn't overtax the... Except for our elementary teachers.
It goes with the...
It goes with the curriculum.
So are you talking about, you know, curriculum writing in a certain sense, or curriculum generally in terms of, and then making adjustments according to the needs of, you know, life? So who actually drives that, that process? To make sure that curriculum is in all departments in my field, you know, somebody isn't falling down, getting this or stagnating or just, because no, you know, you pick back, you might pick back to what happened with curriculum writing, it was almost, say, at least. And so sometimes it took a long time to get a program written or written on, and it took a lot of effort. But they would, but you always knew that there was somebody was on top of it because they're inherently saying, oh, we're a little closer, we're a little closer in this area. So how is this going to look then, this big flow of corrections and additions and additions?
Well, there is, that's actually a great, and I think it's a very appropriate question for where we are right now, because what we're doing and what we've done over the past, this past year is, we actually revamped some of the jobs... we actually revamped some of the job descriptions for our, for our teacher leaders, who are department heads. And we're asking them to work with their departments. And so right now, we're at the, we're at the point where we're training our, our department heads so they can support their teachers in evaluating their curriculum, writing it to standards, demonstrating or presenting big ideas and essential questions and everything, competencies. Because you're absolutely right, it's a very onerous process that commands pretty much all of your time if you allow it and then it just has to be done over again. So we think that this is probably the best way to, to handle the changes in a timely period and also to elevate that that position to something that is more than just counting textbooks and filling out budget forms at the end of the year, but actually being an instructional leader and some of the professional development that you've seen in here is actually, I think it's on the first page, Department Chair Curriculum Writing Training. So that's, that's our effort and then Julie Klein is probably taking a lot of the administrative leadership on on that, on her own. And we're going to be doing some training with regard to that on the eighth and throughout the summer and in this next school year.
Dr. Davies, may I speak to that just because one, we have created templates and one of the templates, Carol, that's out there is the departments have to work together to prioritize what their needs are and those things have to be reported out to Dr. Davies so that we can really have a grasp because there are a lot of courses that are taught, I mean, you know, art, I just met with Tim DeWalt, who's head of the art department today. And we were working on what the game plan is for June 8th with the group of teachers that he has and what the next steps are within the K-8 art teachers to do their priority work in their curriculum writing. So it is, it is a big thing to do, but they have to, part of the template is laying out the priorities of what they need to do and how many days they might need to do that during the course of the 15, 16 school year. Because it is ongoing. Everything's done in Google Docs as well. So these are live documents that, you know, staff can see as they are working on them and then it's part of the PLC process.
So then do principals become the managing force for that in their school through their, their department heads?
Yes, and the principals and us, we all have some ownership of that process and it's a learning process because we're all, we're training our department heads and our principals and it's going to be something that happens over time, but I think the, the building principal is a very big part to play there.
And then you're not going to submit a piece, a piece of question or information for us to mull over those?
Ideas are something that certainly can be presented to the board, but since those might not change as frequently as some of the strategies that are being used to teach, et cetera. Because curriculum is, you know, or should say curriculum development includes both, you know, teaching as well as the actual content.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davies. Good morning. We have two sets of minutes for the month of April. Are there any changes or revisions to be looked for? Now, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Treasurers report.
I'm going to Treasury's report for Exeter Township School District for the financial statements for the period ending for 30, 2015. And I have questions and concerning something about the-
Can we have a second? I have a second discussion.
I have a question concerning the athletic position there. It said something about restitution as far as some monies. And I was wondering about that.
Well, if you're looking in the revenue, if things were collected, it's sent over on restitution. I guess it depends on the description that person that posts deposits. So when money's collected for some reason, we send, it's sent to the business office on restitution.
So is the money held until it's, until we get it?
It is sent over, if it's cash, it goes immediately to National Pen Bank, Security Banks. If it's checks, it is sent over immediately to the business office.
I, I didn't know if there was someone missing in, I mean, with restitution, I wasn't sure what it meant.
Yeah, that's the form we use for the building secretary or athletic secretary to report the check and the reason it was collected and where it's to be deposited and what it can.
Any further discussion? I'm sure there's a point. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the report, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Tamora, business functions.
Under six A, appointment of solicitor. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors appoints John S. Malzne Esquire as solicitor for the Exeter Township School District at a retainer fee of $4,896 and an hourly rate of $143, which is a $3 per hour increase for the 2015-2016 school term.
Second.
Motion is second discussion.
Just a, for your curiosity, Mr. Malzne, how long you just solicited? What was your first date of employment?
Date might be, right. I, I'm going to, about seventy-nine.
Okay, great. Thank you. May I just, just wait a little?
Any further discussion?
Oh, Dan, I think I guess you, can you tell us like what the total amount of monies that Mr. Malzne received so far this year compared to last year?
It is in the administrative section, but I'll, I'll tell you. Here today, 2014, and this is general fund and a Watten project as well as some work that's been done on the transportation centers, forty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars plus. And last year, it's fifty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-one.
Any further discussion? On the favor of approving Mr. Malzne as solicitor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome aboard, Mr. Malzne.
Under six B, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors appoints Ms. Patricia O'Brien Peja as treasurer for the Exeter Township School District for a period of one year effective July 1st, 2015.
Second.
Can you hand it to her?
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Hey, can you tell us the total?
All in favor of-
Including travel expenses.
All in favor of appointing Ms. Peja as the treasurer, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under six C, disposal of books. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the disposal of ninety-nine science books from the senior high school with copyright dates from 1983 through 2004.
Second.
Motion is second discussion. All in favor of disposal of the books, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Books are disposed.
Under six D, the authorization participated in Burke County Joint Purchasing Board. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors authorize district participation in the Burke County Joint Purchasing Board for the following bids. Under one, cheese food products, two, fuel, three, NOI food products, four, classroom and office supplies, five, copy paper, six, custodial and janitorial supplies, seven, digital media equipment and technology supplies, eight, canned and dried food products, and nine, food service paper products.
Second.
Motion is second discussion.
What are NOI food products? It's net off invoice and it has to do with using USDA commodity dollars, directing some of those donations toward the manufacture of a final product like McCain. So you can direct some of your allotment and get a final product and then the manufacturer will give you a discount while the period ends. So it's net off.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the person who thought it was listed, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under the approval of Athletic Accident Insurance F, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the Athletic Accident Insurance for the 2015-2016 school year with AG Administrators, Inc. at a fee of $24,000. The fiscal year 2014-15 premium was unchanged to $24,000. The policy will cover all senior high and junior high sports.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. On the favor of purchasing any insurance, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under F, authorizing voluntary school, school accident coverage, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors authorizes the offering of voluntary student accident coverage through AG Administrators, Inc. for parent purchase for fiscal year 2015-16 at a cost of $22.50 per year for school time or at a rate of $90 per year for 24-hour coverage. The rates are unchanged from the current year.
Second.
Motion is second discussion.
Do we know what the participation is in that program? We know I was going to ask.
I knew that and I had actually, our agent has been out last week and she hasn't gotten back to me. I was anticipating a question, but I can let you know it's minimal, but so, although we should do a better-
It doesn't cost us anything, right?
It doesn't cost us anything and, you know, Dr. Martin sends the letter out at the beginning of the school year, but we'll, we should do a better job of communicating because there are a couple circumstances throughout the school year where some parents could lose it.
Thank you.
Any further questions? On the favor of authorizing the insurance, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under six G, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a comprehensive service agreement with CSI for the support of the IWATSU telephony and RAULA and the intercom clock systems for seven district buildings for the period June 1st, 2015 through May 31st, 2016 at a cost of $19,584. This is the same cost as the current agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the contracts, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
How do you even know what a telephone is?
It has to do with the telephone system.
Under H, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the submission of Plan Con Part K to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the partial current refunding of the current, of the general obligation bonds series of 2010 through the issuance of general obligation bonds, series A of 2015.
Second.
Motion is second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under six I, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the submission of Plan Con Part K to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the full current refunding of the outstanding balance of the general obligation bonds series of 2010 through the issuance of the general obligation bond series B of 2015.
Second.
Motion is second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under six J, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the proposed final budget for the Food Service Department for the 2015-2016 school year with revenue of $1,724,975, expenditures of $1,831,310, and a net loss of $106,335. Budget includes payment of $81,000 to General Fund for utilities, insurance, and other district provided services.
I'll be second.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm going to vote against this only because I was hoping that maybe we would have gotten a higher allocation in the $81,000. I'm still opposed to carrying a big fund balance, although I understand some of the the arguments against wiping that. But I think we need to find some creative solution to running down that excess surplus.
Dan, you provided us a document with the costs.
I did, and it is the second attachment, food reimburse, food service reimbursement. You had asked how it's calculated and you can open it up there, but basically just to give you some background, since 2008, '09, I recognized as, Dr. Tamora recognizes that there is a fund balance in there. Prior to me coming up with this methodology, it would just be a straight $50,000 per year charged to the food service to come back to General Fund. So over the past several years, it's been between eighty and one year was $112,000. The reason it's eighty now, this year, we've been given some guidance by PDE, both for food service and general fund about our indirect cost rate calculations. And particularly to food service, we are being cautioned that you need to have very good documentation on what you are charging the food service, especially when it comes to direct costs. So what I can do going forward is while I charge some custodial help, I would actually have to have custodians love the time that they spend cleaning the kitchen in order to support it better. But for the most part, it has been utilities, but I will be working on a, because it'll be reviewed by PDE on the method that I use to charge, but I've been trying to bring over more over the past several years, but now somebody's going to be really looking at it and so that's why it's at eighty thousand.
Can we, can we charge them for this, the space? I mean, we, we bought, there's nothing here in terms of, I mean, we built the building and there's a cost to the district for the facility.
Maybe through an indirect cost methodology.
Yeah.
I'd have to go through that. You know, there's, there's a whole huge document on what you can, can't do. And it's, it's going forward. I really can't go back for anything.
All right, thanks.
And no possible way of pro-rata sort of calculation as opposed to having people log time? Cost me this much to clean the building, you know, this space.
I believe I would support and I would argue that they could, anybody who reviews it, that I think our custodian, our supervisor has a very good idea how much time is spent and who's assigned to that. So I would use that.
Okay, that's, yes.
Any further discussion? On the favor of approving the food services budget, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Under six K, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the proposed final budget for the capital project funds, excluding a Watten Creek project fund for the 2015-2016 school year with revenue of $9,000, expenditures of $116,000. the 2015-2016 school year with revenue of $9,000, expenditures of $116,166, and fund balance as of 6/30/16 of $6,874,765.
I have a motion, a second discussion.
I'm going to vote against this because I, I'm not in favor of transferring $800,000 from the General Fund to the Capital Reserve, but I'd rather see that remain in the General Fund to reduce the deficit.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the capital budgets, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have 6-3. Approved.
Under 6L, the approval of budget transfers, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves budget transfers for the month of April 2015 in the amount of $4,176, I'm sorry, $4,176.21. Sorry about that.
Second.
A motion, a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the transfers, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under M, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors authorizes district administration to accept a proposal from Dimmerling Consulting, Inc. to perform a transportation impact assessment study for the new transportation center at a cost of $4,250 and to prepare highway occupancy permit plans at a cost of $5,950.
Second.
Motion, a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, 7-2.
And under N, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors authorizes district administration to accept a proposal from Field Turf USA for the resurfacing of the senior high running track at a cost of $162,203.3. The funding for the capital project will be included with the fiscal year 2015-16 general fund budget appropriation. Field Turf USA participates in the Keystone Purchasing Network formal bid process, contract number 201203-01.
Second.
A motion, a second discussion.
Just pleased that the number came in less than what we anticipated. I think if we review in the track, it's pretty apparent that it needed to be done. Happy that it came in less than what we thought it was going to be.
Can I ask, we used to have some different terms like repair, resurface, reconstruct.
Uh huh, this is a resurfacing.
What are we getting with this, for this price?
Resurfacing.
So it's not a whole new track?
They're not going to take the existing surface out, they're going to lay it into an overlay of-
An overlay?
Yeah.
And do they have an expected life, what's the life expectancy?
Ten years, they say.
One of my big concerns, and I was going to bring it up when we went to the SOE committee, is the fact that when we were touring the facility a few weeks ago, what I noted was that we have a lot of cracking that is migrating from the adjacent by two minutes areas that then runs into the track in a perpendicular manner, and somehow we have to amend that in order that A, the substructure is rebuilt to prevent that from happening, and B, prevent the continual migration of that crack into the paving area. And I'm wondering if that is built into this estimate where we go about all this expenditure? And I'm very for, much for the fact we're doing the project, but I don't want us to have a product and you put it out there and three years down the line, we start noticing cracking that maybe we should have been addressing in this particular contract to make sure we can prevent some of this and some of the maintenance procedures. It's just one of those things, I don't know if that was put into the contract document or the bid request or-
The cracks themselves in the asphalt?
Well, you'll, you can see them actually, I mean, they run, it's not the ones that run with the line.
The cost of that would be outside of this and we would have someone coming for hot tar.
Well, it's not hot tar, they're going to actually, they're going to have to dig it out and rebuild it from the bottom up.
You're talking about on the track itself or outside?
Actually, what happens if you were, yeah, if you look at the track and this-
From the stadium seating.
It's, it's running straight-
Keeps going, yes.
Right, exactly, and it starts and will then migrate.
Yes. So whatever they, yeah, we've, we talked about that this morning and I guess within this bid, they're going to address what's actually on the track.
On the track.
Then we need to, at the same time, address what, like what you said, where it starts.
Right, because if it's going, if they don't amend that, then we're really going to appear with the same kind of problems.
So Ken is going to contact another contractor to, to do that.
It's not the same unit? I just wonder, because I would think this contractor would want to be owning the whole operation.
I don't think that contractor did that. He, he recommended that we contact another-
Yeah, yeah, he actually said, because we questioned him, we had a conference call and questioned him about there and he said, well, you know, you can trust that separately.
Another, another thing that came up during our tour was the fact that we had, sometimes it appeared that the ambulances were driving across the existing track area and then possibly parking on some of our paving and the track facilities, and I think that we have to be proactive in our ways of people getting here to there, keep the ambulances off there. We used to have mats that we rolled out on top of the track for the high traffic areas for, for the football team to come in, and yes, I know they're heavy and they're pain in the neck, but you know, if there's a way that we can prolong the life of our materials and our operation, those structures will be good.
And Tom's aware of that and he said he's going to take care of that and will have the vans again, and he feels that we can leave them on for a period of time so we don't have to keep paving them on and off.
Anne, just a quick question, why is it that we're running this capital expenditure through the general funding?
Well, what's in the proposed final budget was the $702,000 and part of that $702,000 was $226,000 for this project. Of course, that'll be reduced to $162,000. I mean, there is always the alternative to reduce that number in General Fund and take it out of the capital reserve.
I'm just thinking aloud here, in terms of what we run, in terms of capital spending through the general fund, does that give the taxpayers and potentially the board a false view of what our general fund deficit, what our general fund operating deficit is?
You can look at those costs as a one-time cost or unless you want to continue to have a level of capital in your budget. This year, $666,000, so $702, but we have the option of funding things out of the capital reserve. If we were a school district that as a practice every year moved any excess of revenue of our expense into capital reserve, then you can get yourself in a position where you can do most of your capital out of that fund outside of, but that has to be a practice that you do on a consistent basis and with the way things have been over the past few years and uncertainty, the economy, we've kept some in the capital, excuse me, the general fund. There is that.
I'm, I'm just going to suggest to Mr. Quinter that I'll remember also, maybe next, for next, this year, next budgeting year, we talked about running capital expenditures exclusively through the capital expenditures account so that there's never any sort of mixing of apples and oranges. I mean, despite it being okay emotionally legally, but it may give us the false sense of what our operating loss is as an educational institution because we're adding capital expenditures, even if we've done it all along.
Doing it all along, that means great, thank you.
Anne, and we have changed our practice of purchasing buses. They used to be purchased with the capital reserve fund. So there's, there's another significant expense that's now seen to the general.
We may end up being able to be positive.
I think that are these supposed to be dumbness that we give ourselves latitude to keep the balance that's beneficial to our whole school district by being able to absolutely leave it and protect the future.
Giving ourselves, you know, looking to the future, yeah. I can tell you there are school districts who do it exclusively through the capital reserve, but they, as a practice, may transfer a significant amount if they're able to, you know, to keep funding that. Our practice has been different over the years. Sometimes we bought, replaced a roof at a million dollars out of the general fund. There have been years where we've only funded a couple hundred thousand. So, you know, I, I could see Dr. Tamora's point. It's really how we're managing the funds and is it cleaner the other way and it's clear what you're operating, I can see that. Sometimes it gets, I think it gets confusing to everyone, okay, so why should we put the general fund and, but you have to remember, you have to keep feeding that capital reserve fund to fund the smaller projects, like the ones that we're doing here that aren't major renovations. Because there have been years in the past where the capital reserve has, was almost exhausted and then over the past few years, it's been built back up. So we'll consider that in our future projections.
And Anne, just a point of clarification, the general, the capital reserves fund has almost $7 million of a fund balance.
It's a combination of two funds.
Right, and the legal, the outstanding legal, legal issue that we have with the Watten Creek is not accounted for in that $7 million, is it?
That's correct, it's not accounted for.
So there's also a potential of one and a half plus? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Very well, is there any further comments?
Anne, just a question, Anne, we, we do pay tax, I'm sorry, that's not included in this, we, there's about what's, no sales tax is included in this overall price, one sixty-two.
No, we would not.
We don't pay that.
No.
Thank you.
Question is resurfacing of the senior high track. All in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Tamora, Dr. Quinter, personnel.
I move the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following retirements listed under, uh, support staff, number one, certificated staffs, additional support staff, and extra crickler staff. Well, I'm sorry, wait a minute. It's going on too fast. Now, the retirement is just support staff Nancy Boyer. Second.
Motion, second discussion. On favor approving Ms. Boyer's retirement, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following resignations. Number one, certificated staff, number one again, support staff, and extra crickler staff. Second.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor approving Ms. Boyer's retirement, please indicate so. Aye. Opposed? Square.
The Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following resignations. Number one, certificated staff, number one again, support staff, and extra crickler staff. Second.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following appointments listed under Part D, number one, uh, certificated staff and support staff, substitute teachers, which all have certification. Second.
A motion, second discussion. All in favor, please indicate-
I'll just, one, one, one point, in terms of the certificated staff, is this, does this include some of the individuals that we had talked about as potential new people on the budget?
No.
No? Hold on, okay.
I do have a question, yes, under support staff.
Yes.
Is standing back in spouse the teacher or somebody else?
Is it the- I don't know, it's got to be the same guy. I was, it's, it's got to be the same sta, I mean, staff that-
I thought it was his son.
Oh, is it his son? Okay.
Sean, he goes by Sean.
Oh, okay.
So it's Sean.
That answers that question. I was wondering the same.
Any further comments, questions? All in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel are appointed.
I move the Board of School Directors appoint Dr. Beverly Martin to a three-year term as superintendent, per the terms and conditions specified in a properly executed agreement.
Second.
A motion, a second discussion.
My, my question is, we've already made the appointment, we're just approving the contract.
I, I agree, right, to say publicly.
Should we change the word?
Approve the contract. As I think back to December, we got appointed.
Would you like to modify?
Modify that? I recommend that the Board of School Directors execute the terms and conditions specified in a properly executed contract with Dr. Martin.
Well, please execution.
Do you agree with that?
As long as you don't execute the super.
Second. Well, you, you agree is the second to the modification. Is there any discussion on the modified, opposed? All in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome back, thank you.
I move the Board approve the leaves of absence under Part A, uh, certificated staff and support staff, support and administrative staff, both women, young, going too fast again.
Debbie, realize what pickles it is. Who is the stuff going with?
Leaves of absence to the certificated staff, Alyssa Markenbach and support staff Stacy Carey.
Do I have a second?
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve the change of status listed under administrative staff and support staff.
We'll correct the spelling if I can, Dr. Quinter.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Um, yes, I'd like to ask, how many students do we have, or how many teachers do we have in special ed? And why do we need, I, I remember Mr. Barry, he was left, Barry, it was himself and, and the woman who now is retiring, and now, so I, I think Dr. Martin, you told me that we had less special ed, less special ed students than we did last year, however, our costs are increasing. So I don't understand why you need, well, Mrs. Doll, it's a 12-month and this other supervisor is an 11-month, and one has, I guess, I mean, when do they start kindergarten? Do they start special ed, uh, in special already for most of them?
But sometimes.
Sometimes, but mostly if they came to our school without a IEP in kindergarten, then we would, you know, you give them a few, a couple years' chance to see-
Depends, it depends on the student.
All right, well, how many students do we have and teachers, like in elementary and in secondary, as far as students and teachers, students and teachers, that we need now? Three, we have, we have a director, who I'm sure certainly has to get into the schools, plus two others. So why do we need, to me, that seems a little complicated.
Well, we have, it's, it's not, not for the number of students that we're serving. Remember, it encompasses the gifted program as well as the students with disabilities. So we're talking over twenty-five percent of the population when you combine those two groups. And a very high needs population, more intensive needs than the rest of the population. They have to have IEPs written, they have to have progress monitoring, they have to have reevaluations, all kinds of things, those thousand or eleven hundred or however many students. And I don't know if Dr. Miller has the number in her head. I think I'm pretty close. And I don't know the breakdown, I remember you asked that before, and I, I had asked someone in the office, and I don't know if I ever got that, got that information, the breakdown of how many in secondary versus elementary. I would imagine it would be slightly more at the secondary level. But we always had three people, just that we're restructuring those three people and making one of them an administrator, so we could better reach the schools and dividing up the, the students between, the duties between those two people besides Sue, the other two people. One would handle the elementary students and one would handle the secondary students. And then Sue would oversee the whole program.
So we always had three people?
We always had three people, but the third person was a teacher who would be a consultant type thing to teachers, but was in the teacher category. Now we're elevating that to an administrative position to be able to give her a little more authority when she talks to teachers and, you know, but still does the professional involvement part.
So what, what qualifications do they have as far as, you know, past their regular certifications as far as special ed teachers?
Special education supervisor.
So all, all those.
For the newly appointed person. Right.
Or principal.
Or principal, well, I'm talking specifically about Mrs. Willier, who is now being promoted sort of from a teacher to an administrator, but still at less than a twelve-month position. Dr. Miller, do you have anything to add to that? Did I miss something or?
No, you covered most of it. It's just, one of the biggest reasons we want to restructure three people and have Mrs. Willier in that position become administrator is to really increase efficiency. Because Mrs. Willier is not a supervisor, sometimes the three of us are crossing each other in the same driveways and heading to different, same meetings because we keep breaking up our roles across Camp Twelve instead of breaking up our roles with elementary and secondary. Another really big piece that this is going to address is helping principals, because principals are very much in a lot of IEP meetings, and with the new evaluation systems and many of the things that they are pulled, you know, to take care of, this supervisory roles will be able to have the supervisors in the IEP meetings for the meeting of coordinators and some of their, you know, constant supervision of all the special education. So it really will help supervision. Mrs. Willier will be in meetings and be an LEA. There's times she's covered meetings and an advocate has said, "Who are you? You're not even a supervisor." And she doesn't have authority. She doesn't have any, she doesn't have a lot of authority that a supervisor would have at a meeting. So much of us to go around with all the IEP meetings.
And this is really something that, you know, I think I said a couple weeks ago, that really has been a plan and works for many years to, instead of having a supervisor of special education and then an assistant supervisor and then a consultant, that we have a director of special education and pupil services and enhance the responsibilities within that department also. Sue is doing a lot of things that Barry Webb did not do because he didn't have the certification for the director of pupil services. So he's taken on, she's taken on additional responsibilities and have an elementary supervisor and a secondary supervisor. That is, I think, a very efficient model that I have experienced myself working in other school districts and was very helpful to me as a former principal to have that. I developed a very close, you know, good relationship, good working relationship with the person who was, for example, the supervisor of elementary education. And we would work with teacher issues jointly and so forth, and she would be at all the IEP meetings, and that was very helpful to me as a principal. And I really believe that that is the best model to employ for a larger district, and I consider this with our population to be a larger district in terms of our special education responsibilities.
All right, okay, I understand that. Well, how comes the Mrs. Doll, who is on twelve months, and the other, Katie Sirk, who's on a hundred months?
Well, because we do need somebody twelve months out of the year, but we didn't think, and Dr. Miller agreed, that we didn't necessarily need both people twelve months out of the year, so we could cover over the summer. I know that, you know, no fault of the people, but the way it was set up before, many times as superintendent and before that as assistant superintendent, I would feel a lot of special education calls during the summer from parents if Mr. Webb was on vacation and there wasn't a second person to take the call. And they would be angry because nobody was getting back to them, and that's because, you know, he was on a vacation, as he should have been, and but there was no backup person to be able to handle a problem that would come up. Or a new student that would be enrolling and they'd wanna meet people from the special education department. And I'm sure there's a lot of other reasons that Dr. Miller could outline, but we absolutely need to have two people twelve months in that office during the summer. I don't see any other way around it.
Need further discussion? Question is approving the changes of status of the administrative and support staff. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve teachers for the summer school program as detailed in Part H, and that includes a summer school enrichment program, summer music camps, teachers in the park, the K-one summer school program, and the free day summer program.
Second.
Motion, second discussion.
Um, Dr. Martin, for the additional grant that the Jacksonville students have received, you know, from the federal government, are we going to have enough of teachers in the park to accommodate with him?
To, uh...
Isn't, 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 wasn't the Jacksonville students not the grant for?
Yes, yes.
So are we going to have enough teachers?
Not specifically for teachers in the park. Mrs. Klein, do you wanna speak to that?
Yes. Yes, we do. In answer to your question, part of the grant is paying for any Title I identified student at Jacksonville to be able to participate, and there is, there's ample funds there to do so.
And there'll be enough teachers?
Yes. Oh, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Need further discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve the extended contracts for the 2015-2016 school year for the attached list of employees. And that's one of our documents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of extending contracts listed, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve the staffing needs of special education extended school year program 2015 per the attached list of employees.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve the staff conferences listed under Part K as number one to twelve.
Motion, second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the conferences, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That completes personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Bender. Ms. Kutcher, the functions.
I would make is reporting the, the address of the assistant. I move that the board approves the new contract with Manitowoc to provide alternative education for the special ed. District will purchase two upfront slots in Manitowoc County Center for the 2015-16 school year. Each upfront slot is fifteen thousand five dollars if we need a rate for other alternative education placements, the exact amount of twenty-three dollars per day. Current year cost is the exact amount of twenty-three dollars.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor approving the contract with Manitowoc, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would say I move that the board of directors approves an agreement with the Capless School for 2015, extend its full year program services from July 6th, 2015 to August 14th, 2015 for student number nine-seven-zero-one-one-four at a cost of seven thousand two hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor approving the contract for support of the student, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would say I move that the board of directors approves tuition agreements between New Story and the Exeter School District to provide extended school year services for students number one-four-zero-three-seven-three and two-three-zero-one-five-four for the period June 29th, 2015 until July 31st, 2015, at a cost of a hundred and sixty dollars per day. Student number one-three-four-five-five-one for the period June 22nd, 2015 until July 31st, 2015, at a cost of a hundred and seventy-five dollars per day, and student number one-five-zero-one-five-eight for the period May 1st, 2015, student number twelve, 2015, at a cost of a hundred and sixty dollars per day.
Second. Motion, second discussion. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would maybe, I would, I would, I move the board approve a contract between NHS, Pennsylvania and the Exeter School District to provide extended school year services for student number two-six-zero-zero-four-nine for the period June 29th, 2015 through July 31st, 2015, at a cost of nine-seven dollars, one-sixty cents, two days. Can you find me again, please, about NHS?
Second. NHS is what?
Yeah, I, you know what, I know this one. Forget it now. Do you know, Dr. Miller?
NHS.
It serves autistic students.
What's the letter stand for? Yeah.
Oh, is that the one that doesn't stand for anything?
It's up in, wasn't ready. I'm not sure what NHS is. I can look it up real fast. That's right.
I wonder if it says in the agreement.
No.
Norman will be through this. They've held at the school.
It's the, it was like.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the NHS contract, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number eight, I move that the board of directors approve a contract between the Delaware Foundation and the Exeter School District to provide extended school year services for student number one-second-zero-two-seven-eight for the period July 6th, 2015 through August 21st, 2015, at a cost of two-hundred-and-ten dollars per day.
Second. Motion, second discussion.
Can we get any reimbursement for that two-hundred-and-ten dollars a day?
Uh, no.
No?
Not to my knowledge, am I correct, Dr. Miller?
Anne, we know about the reimbursement part, I don't think so.
Or any of those, uh...
For ESY?
Sixty-fourty? Yeah, I don't know if any of those. Oh, the ESY, no, the ESY.
ESY.
Yeah, the ESY, we're responsible for.
Further discussion? All in favor of the road contract, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would say I move that the board of directors approve an agreement with Reading Area Community College to continue to offer due enrollments to the students of Exeter Senior High School 2015-16 school year. The tuition rate is ninety-nine dollars per day, the decrease from the next year's rate of a hundred and seventeen dollars.
Second.
Motion, second discussion.
Question. For the payment of the ninety-nine dollars, is that something we picked up or is that something a student picked up?
Students, parents.
Was there a particular reason for this?
They were overcharging?
Yeah.
We visited the store there.
Yeah, but, you know, at some point they had an explanation for it, how, you know, how wonderful it was that they were actually reducing it and, you know, but still Dave always makes the point that they no longer pay us for the use of our teachers and so forth, so it's nice if they keep the cost down for the parents, though.
I noticed in here that they're covering our honors probability statistics, but now we'll be offering AP, will they be trying to give you a center for that? Is that an opportunity? That's in our attached document, page two, and they're calling that M A T dash two-ten fifteen oh one, and M A T two, M A T dash two-ten dash thirty-five oh one.
I do not know the answer to that question.
I would imagine they would, but just in your prior condition.
Yeah. We'll find out when we get back to you.
Which one?
Get back to you. Uh, the, the NHS, I think the HS stands for Human Services, so maybe it's National Human Services. Northwestern Human Services? Okay.
You can Google it.
Yeah, I did, I did.
Seven year, full battery power.
Do we need the table visit because of that disparity or?
No, I think it's just that we just need clarification, sorry, so they have the opportunity.
Yeah.
All in favor approving the rack contract, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Kutcher. Curriculum committee, curriculum programs, must please.
No, 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 seriously.
There's nothing under curriculum program.
Oh, I know, I know, I know, there's, there are books here.
That's curriculum committee.
All right, right. No report.
Curriculum committee.
I move that the board of school directors approve the purchase of the following textbooks for 2015-2016 school year. Chemistry Grade Eleven, copyright 2015, the publisher is Pearson. And the practice of statistics, copyright 2014, W. H. Freeman and Company, VFW New York Publishing.
Second.
I have motion, second discussion. Hearing none, all willingly authorized purchase of books, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And again, it is reported that the following proposed textbook for the purchase for the 2015-16 school year, it will be available for review for thirty days in the administration building and the textbook is Foundations of Economics, it's an AP course, also the publisher is Pearson.
Thank you, sir. Technology committee.
Only update I have is that there is a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 26th, at six-thirty. Primary topic for the evening will be one-to-one program, high school, and if anybody has any agenda items, please send the Joe way by Wednesday, May 26th.
Is that in the L G I, what you said?
Uh, I thought it was here and there.
I thought it was here, too. Oh, all right. May 26th, at six-thirty.
Thank you, sir. B C I U. One thing I'm submitting to the board. Athletic committee, Mr. Stone.
I move that the board of school directors approves the establishment of high school water quality teams for boys and girls to start in August 2015. water polo teams for boys and girls to start in August 2015 to be self-funded. The board of school directors authorizes administration to complete the necessary steps, including registration with the PIAAA to establish the teams and work with the parent groups who will provide all funding for the teams. The board of school directors also authorizes administration to pursue a cooperative agreement for water polo with Mankean School District.
Second.
A motion, a second, discussion.
Though we're, question, though we're saying that it's going to be self-funded, is there anticipated costs that the parents know will be undertaken for this sport of the choice?
They are well aware.
Okay, what is the guarantee that two years from now they don't come back and say, "Well, we did this, now you keep it going"?
There is no guarantee, and the board that's in place at that time will have a decision to make.
Where will they practice?
At Bull's Gym or other pools in the surrounding school districts that do have aquatics.
And that they're going to be over in the summer, and that's probably the answer. Any further discussion? All in favor approving the water polo program, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors accepts a donation of a new scoreboard, including installation for the senior high school stadium at an estimated value of sixty-four thousand two hundred dollars from Hibbs of Kent Horse Inc. The acceptance of the donation is subject to review of all terms by the district's selector.
Second.
A motion, second, discussion.
I'd just like to ask about, is there a cost to the district to remove the old?
No, that, that is part of, in fact, we're looking at possibly either using it or maybe the, if we cannot use it on-site, that the township may even talk about, talking to them about down at Trap Run or someplace, but we would take a look at it, but if we can't use it, then it would be disposed of.
You got electricity at Trap Run, too? Yeah. I should pre-visit specifically.
Be further discussion.
No, I just, I just want to thank Tom Machadry for, I mean, doing this is just tremendous. I mean, we were, we were talking about it, and one of the things we'd be able to do this is electronic advertising, it's one of the things we had talked about in the past, to be able to have this happen for us is just a win, so just a thank you and everybody by a come. I might buy two.
Be further discussion.
I had one tonight.
All in favor of accepting HIBS Incorporated donation, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and I just second your thanks to Tom. There's about three different kinds of people, people who do nothing, people who bitch about it, people who get it done, so, so let me get it, Tom, and he gets it done.
What's Mr. Rolles needs, come for hourly?
Should we ask the secretary to send a thank you to the Mr. Tom for this generous donation?
We, Mr. Legath and I were speaking to, we were, because it happened so fast, we were hoping that once everything is ratified, that we would actually have a ribbon cutting and a thank you. And also, too, one of the things that Tom and I talked about is, in addition to that, also use that as an opportunity to thank our other sponsors. Not everyone can throw that kind of money around, but we do have a lot of folks that have really helped us out, and it's nice to support them and also to thank them, so we'll let everyone know.
Mr. Legath, we're going to have to approach some of the experts.
But, you know, he really likes parties.
Pardon me?
He really likes parties, so Tom, we're not even gonna be cutting, we're gonna be partying, too.
Can you speak, sorry?
We were actually hoping that it would be at one of the football games, so I think, since that, since that would have thousands of people there, I think that would be applicable.
Yeah, he does, deserves that, he deserves that kind of recognition.
I agree. And as far as the results, since we still have some folks competing, what we'll do is we'll just give you an end of the year, but I believe, I believe Tom said we did have the most county championships of any school district, leaving that to six. Yeah, excellent, so that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Stowe. Legislatively, is it township, no report. Proporations, Mr. Freeman.
Just a thank you to anyone who either helped or supported May Days this past Friday and Saturday, of course, it did rain one day, not as much apparently as raining now, but it looked like everyone had fun, the attendance was great, and it looks like profit-wise will be close to last year's profit, which was eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, split between the six APTs and parks.
Thank you, sir. BCTC, Mr. Pizzio.
Yeah, actually, we just, I think I informed you that Bob Lees is retiring in June and his, his replacement was Dr. James Kraft, who was the current principal at the East Campus, so we just finished the cert and appointed a gentleman to be the principal of the East Campus, and we think we have the entire team back in place.
Thank you, sir. Facilities, Mr. Brady.
Well, as mentioned earlier, we had our meeting during the first week of this month, at which time we took a tour of the athletic facilities of the high school on the outside of the building, we already went through the track and some of the others we discovered there. As we took our tour, we noticed there had been some vandalism area activity on one of the retaining walls, it's a block to table all, that Mr. Pitts is aware of. Also, we noted a few areas that sort of loose fencing that he's going to look into, but overall, the main emphasis being the track and the water just.
Thank you, sir. Payment requests, or audit committee, I'm sorry.
There's no request of work.
Payment request?
I move that we pay the bills and that are on the piece, two pages, in the amount We have rate checks of five hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-seven cents, we have total worth of payments from the general fund of eight hundred and ninety thousand, twenty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents, and from the 2014 capital project fund of four fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents, and you want to pick elementary school, a total of twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Martin?
Thank you. This is the time of the year when we get to celebrate our successes throughout the year, the successes of our students, our teachers, all of our schools, our athletic program, as we just talked about, having all the state champions that we've earned, championships that we've earned this year, the concerts, the art show, I've been trying to get out to all of those, and I know I missed the Reifden Art Show, or concert, too, but I've been crossing paths with Pat a whole lot, she's been going to a lot of them, so the art shows have been fantastic, the concerts have been absolutely phenomenal, the teachers do such a good job, the kids, you know, really, really showing their talents, and it's just really a great time of year to celebrate, with graduation coming up, obviously that's going to be the icing on the cake to end the school year. I want to thank the board for approving our new contract, and looking forward to lots of great things to come in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other items to come before the board?
Well, speaking of concerts, this Wednesday evening, the high school is going to have their concert, and if you haven't ever seen one, I mean, that Mr. Richmond and the students put on such a great performance, it's, it's so professional, it's, you cannot even begin to believe that these are only nine, we felt great, so if you have time, you should come to see it. Mr. Missler didn't ask me to do that, I just did that on my own.
The chorus and the choir did wonderfully last week as well.
I used to play the Sis' phone, that's what it is. Any further items to come before the board? I would request we take a five-minute break and then have a little short discussion, and we can have you out of here by nine o'clock.
And if you remember, everyone should vote tomorrow, because tomorrow is the latest.
Do I have motion for adjournment?
So do.
Second.